Good evening. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chairman, can we just stand? Today's the 80th anniversary of D-Day. Just a moment.
At first, I'd like to welcome my fellow board members. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
Our town manager was unable to make it tonight, and our clerk will not be here either. And this meeting is being recorded. Our first item on the agenda is our Finance Director/Treasurer/Collector Wendy Hatch. She's seeking approval of the general obligation bond in the amount of $5,727,000. That will close on June 13, 2024. Ms. Hatch, would you please come to the podium? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, I'm here requesting the approval of the Board of Selectmen on what was offered as a loan of $5,727,000. We took bids on May 22 for that, for various projects: feasibility on the third fire station, some drainage capital improvements, parks and playground improvements, police cruisers, municipal department equipment, sewer lift station improvements, design on a couple of inflow and infrastructure abatement projects, some equipment for the sewer and water departments, water hydrant and valve replacement. So the total was $5,727,000, as I said. We took bids on the 22nd. We had five bids: Roosevelt and Cross, TD Securities, FHN Financial Capital Markets, Robert Baird and Raymond James and Associates. The winning bid was Roosevelt and Cross for a total interest cost of 3.42%. They did offer a premium on the loan of $349,494.70. And what cities and towns in Massachusetts are required to do is apply that premium after closing costs, a calculated or estimated, toward the amount of the loan, and it actually reduces the amount of the loan. So the town gets paid the full $5.7 million, but we're only obligated to pay back the net of $5.5 million. That premium offsets. That was as a result of the Municipal Modernization Act back in 2016, where cities and towns used to be able to just take that premium in as excess revenue. So the resulting loan is $5.5 million. The S&amp;P gave us a AA+ bond rating. They reaffirmed our AA+ bond rating. We had a surveillance call prior to the sale, and they credited a strong economy, strong management, good financial policies and practices, budgetary flexibility, strong liquidity, and strong institutional framework as positive credit factors for us to maintain that bond rating. So interest rates have gone up a little bit. When you look at this in comparison to the -- we borrowed a similar amount last year. Interest rates, I think, were hovering right around three, slightly more than three. So now you see that there is a slight uptick in the interest rates. So with the pleasure of the board this evening, the vote is attached to the back of the packet that does need to be read into the minutes and affirmed by the board this evening in order for me to go forward, close the loan with our closing attorney. And if anyone has any questions that I can try and answer for you, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Is this a 14-year bond?
A 14-year? No. It has various maturities. The equipment is maturing in five years. There's other portions of the loan that are maturing in 10, and then the remainder is maturing in 20.
Do board members have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Slakman Chikolini.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. That's good news on the interest rates. I was expecting those to even be higher, given where they've been fluctuating. So it's nice to see that we received five bids, but also all in the mid-to-low threes. The question I had is, the stated interest rate on the back on the vote is 5% in the vote? Do you see it next to the principal payment?
Mm.
Shouldn't that be the 3.42?
Right. Yes, yes, it should.
So the motion will be the 3.42?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
Does that change your mild deficit?
No, the principal will stay the same, because this is the principal pay down, and then the interest is on top of that. But to Madam Chair's point, the principal payments are only out through 2038.
Mm.
Wouldn't -- if we're in '24, we would be to '44.
Let me see. We've gone back and forth so many times on this. Nope, 2038 is correct. So it is only 15 years.
So it's 15. It's 15 years, including the 2024 payment that'll be made.
Yes, yes.
It'll be 15 as the max?
Yes.
Okay.
So equipment is going out five years, and then lift stations is going out 3, 6, 9, 10, and then the remainder is the 15.
Okay. That makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Do board members have any additional questions?
No, just thank you again, Wendy, for your hard work on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Hatch. You're welcome.
Seeing no more questions, would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam Chair.
Selectmen Chikolini.
I'll make a motion as follows: that the sale of the $5.5 million general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2024 bonds of the town dated June 13, 2024, the bonds to Roosevelt and Cross, Inc., at the price of $5,809,376.93 in accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond should be payable on October 15 of the years and in principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows: year 2024, $630,000, 3.42%; 2025, $630,000, 3.42%; 2026, $620,000, 3.42%; 2027, $610,000, 3.42%; 2028, $610,000, 3.42%; 2029, $290,000, 3.42%; 2030, $290,000, 3.42%; 2031, $290,000, 3.42%; 2032, $290,000, 3.42%; 2033, $290,000, 3.42%; 2034, $190,000, 3.42%; 2035, $190,000, 3.42%; 2036, $190,000, 3.42%; 2037, $190,000, 3.42%; and 2038, $190,000, 3.42%. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale of preliminary official statement dated May 22, 2024, and a final official statement dated May 29, 2024, the official statement, each in such form may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bond shall be subject to the redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and comply with the relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one in the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart or the signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document, and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. And further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectmen Chikolini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. So Ms. Hatch, will have something for us to sign in the next couple days?
I actually have it all here this evening. I have to get it out by Federal Express tomorrow.
Madam Chair.
Selectmen Chikolini.
I'd like to make a motion for a two-minute recess to sign the documents.
That's seconded by the chair. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectmen Chikolini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We're going to take a quick two-minute recess.
Thank you.
We are now back in session. We do not have any correspondence this evening, but we do have our first citizen's comments. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, our first public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the request of Palos LLC, doing business as Palos Manager Paul Delios, for a full all-alcoholic liquor license to be located at 304E Lincoln Avenue, Saugus, Mass. 01906. This hearing will be held at the Saugus Town Hall, 2nd floor auditorium, 298 Central Street, Saugus, Mass. on June 6, 2024, at 7:10 p.m.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Selectmen Corbiano.
For the record, I am the landlord of this property. I will not be sitting on this hearing.
Thank you, Selectmen Corbiano. Hi, can we please have your name and address for the record?
If I could just give you my card, so you can have--
Oh, that'd be great, sure. Take your time. Thank you. So you're Cristo C. Tziotis?
Tziotis, from Winter, 193--
193 Winter Street. My friend, thank you.
And I represent Palos, Inc., today, who's before you for a full liquor license. And he's at 304 Lincoln Avenue, runs a nice Italian restaurant. Paul, many people know him in this community. He's been in the business for almost 50 years, between restaurant and Cane's Donuts. And he's come before you to stay competitive. He needs a full liquor license versus beer and wine, because people come in nowadays, they look for a martini, they add different drinks. So we're here before the board to request the full liquor license.
Thank you. And we realized that he had the wine and malt and cordial license. He was looking for an all-alcoholic license.
Yes.
We did not have one available. That's why this board advertised as much as we did, so that people could come forward, because, again, we don't typically have all-alcoholic licenses available, so this is a good thing. Do board members have any questions?
I have just one question. We're going to have the same conditions as everyone, beer and wine. That's all. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Selectmen Chikolini.
So to Selectmen Serino's point, the conditions and hours will stay. We'll stay with what we have on the existing license that you have. Your hours are all going to stay the same, same everything. But also, you're going to -- so you'll turn in your beer/wine and cordials license, and this new license will take effect if it's ratified?
Yes.
So, okay. Just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Madam Chairman, just for the audience and the audience at home tonight, we had two licenses available, and only two applicants applied for these licenses. I just wanted to bring that out.
What we've done in the past, if we had one license and there were five different applicants, we would hear -- we would listen to what everybody had to say, and we'd have discussion amongst ourselves, and then we would give out one of those licenses. As Selectmen Serino said, we had two licenses that we said were available, and we have the two applicants.
And Madam Chair?
Selectmen Chikolini.
I think it's worth noting also that in the past, when we did have more applicants than we did licenses available, we've historically leaned towards ones that have already have an established business in town and have some experience with the responsibility that goes with a license. I, for one, I know everybody on the board has been to Palos, and it's not a surprise that Mr. Delios runs a first-class establishment, very similar to the family business that he ran for many decades as well. And, you know, I think it's an easy support for -- to help a business in town. And anyone who hasn't been there, I encourage you to try it, because it's really -- we're very fortunate to have someone of that skill set and that quality in town, in that location, not having to go on Route 1 and everything else. So I just want you to know, we appreciate having you in town and continuing to invest in Saugus and believe in Saugus. It doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Selectmen.
Thank you, Selectmen Chikolini. And just to Selectmen Chikolini's point, you are on your current license. We have Sunday through Thursday, 11:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 11:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Very good. Do board members have any additional questions?
Madam Chairman?
This is--
Just the applicant. I'm glad that you got this license, and it is a very nice restaurant, and I wish you continued -- what word do I want?
Success.
Success. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
With that said, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chair.
Selectmen Chikolini.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
And that is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectmen Chikolini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Selectmen Chikolini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will make a motion that -- I have it. I'll make a motion that we grant the request and the request of Palos LLC, DBA Palos Manager Paul Delios, for their full all-alcoholic liquor license to be located at 304E Lincoln Ave., Saugus, Mass. 01906. Hours of operation will remain the same, Sunday through Thursday, 11:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 11:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. We received all positive feedback from all the department heads with no objections. Thank you.
Do you want to also put in there that they're going to return their beer/wine and cordial license?
Yeah, it's understood, but we could put that in. They will relinquish their current beer/wine and cordials license once this license is in effect.
Thank you, Selectmen Chikolini. And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectmen Chikolini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Congratulations, Chair.
Congratulations.
We wish you continued success.
Good luck there, Palos. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're now ready for -- we are now ready for our second public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on request from Flow Golf Lounge, 880 Broadway, Saugus, Mass., for an all-alcoholic liquor license. Manager Than Nayan, 273 Lincoln Street, Riviera, Mass. 02151. This public hearing will be held in the Saugus Town Hall Auditorium, 2nd floor, 298 Central Street, on June 6, 2024, at 7:20 p.m. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Hong Tran, Attorney for Flow Golf. The organization appeared before you on April 16, seeking one of the available licenses that you just mentioned, and we were waiting until your decision was for us to wait to see if there's any other applicants. And we are here again before you, seeking the same application, and nothing has changed from the last time that we appeared till now, and we're open for questions. We also brought with us Mr. Degreco Nick over here, who has experience, almost 10 years, in the servicing bar industry and management for restaurants, where he is very well-versed in serving alcohol. He's going to be the general manager for the bar and liquor service.
And you told me earlier that all three of them are tip-certified?
Yes, yes.
Do board members have any questions?
Just one question, Madam Chairman.
Selectmen Serino.
Hours of operation can be Monday through Thursday, 7 a.m. to 10 p.m., and Friday and Saturday, 7 a.m. to 11 p.m.
Correct.
That's what your entertainment is. Those will be the liquor hours in 71 seats.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Selectmen Chikolini.
Just for confirmation, it was Friday and Saturday, 7 to 11? 7 a.m. to 11 p.m.?
Yeah. When do you think you'll be opening?
So most of the approval has been completed. The only thing that we're waiting for is, I guess, sending in approval for the Board of Health, and I think we will be completed with that. Board and the Fire Department just approved us. Correct me if I'm wrong. The only thing that we're waiting for is the Board of Health. Yeah.
Do you also have a business card?
Did you ask if I have a business card?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
I have to write the minutes, so I want to make sure I get the name correct. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Ton Nguyen, Manager at Flow Golf Lounge. I just want to clarify that we have got approval from all departments. Attorney Tran is referring to the permit of the Board of Health, which is the next step. But the Board of Health has approved our kitchen and building department. Everything is all set. We technically can open, but we want to see where the liquor license is, because the grand opening is the first. We want to make a grand first opening.
Yeah. I saw something come through recently, because you made a change. You took out the fryer and--
Yes.
The fryer and the pizza oven.
We took out the fryer and the pizza oven. We updated that with our chef, just to kind of get the process going. We might consider doing a full hood, down the line, but for right now, the sake of, to be honest with you, money and time, we're just going to proceed forward with that menu.
So if everything goes right, the way you need it to go, and then you get all the sign-offs from the Board of Health, when do you think you'd be opening?
As soon as we get the liquor license, which I think is four to six weeks. If that goes according to plan, we'll open as soon as we get that.
Well, that information, I'm going to leave it to the board. When Ton asked me if we do get approval today, typically, from my understanding with other boards, it gets sent to the ABCC Board. ABCC Board gets four to six weeks for them to typically review, and that's the information that I told him. So everything is pending on the approval of the liquor license, like he said, because we've -- this is a state-of-the-art facility. They've put in almost a million dollars into this facility already, and they want to make a grand-grand opening. And without the liquor license, they're not going to be able to do that, so they want to have a slam dunk grand opening for the first impression.
Thank you. Do board members have any additional questions?
So, Madam Chair.
Selectmen Chikolini.
I'm sure the board has recognized, but I just wanted to really thank you for how well you've adapted to come and write into Saugus. You really invested yourself into the town, attending local events, fundraisers, and sponsoring various things around town. And it's truly a testament. It's one thing to say it. When you first came to us, you said about becoming, you know, a staple in the community, and it's one thing to say it, it's another thing to, like, practice what you preach. And I just want to say that we recognize how sincere you were when you first came to us, and I have no doubt that whatever you say you're going to do, you're going to do. And you've definitely -- you've proved yourself well, and I, as one in this board, definitely appreciate how vested you are in the town in such a short time.
Thank you. That means a lot, to be honest with you. It hasn't been easy, but hopefully it's going to be worth it in the end.
To Selectmen Chikolini's point, it did take a couple months, a few months, but you did get everything that you were requesting, so almost. We haven't voted yet, so can't assume. With that said, do board members have any additional questions?
Just want to wish you well.
Thank you.
Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, is there -- what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chair.
Selectmen Chikolini.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
And that is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectmen Chikolini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Selectmen Chikolini.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we grant the request from Flow Golf, 880 Broadway, Saugus, for their all-alcohol liquor license, the manager being Ton Yan, 273 Lincoln Street, Riviera, Mass. 02151. Hours of operation Monday through Thursday, 7 a.m. to 10 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 7 a.m. to 11 p.m. 71 seats, total capacity for the facility. No objections noted by any of the department heads or public safety.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion?
I'll just add seating capacity on the liquor license, 71 seats. I can't hear you, Jeff.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah, that's included.
Okay, so it's seconded by the chair. We're in discussion. All those in favor of Selectmen Chikolini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Congratulations, Chair.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Hey, guys.
Thank you very much.
Go Celtics.
Have a good night. It is now time for our 7:30 public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the request of Acera di Sculla, 5 Normandy Drive, PBD, Mass. 01940; Mariansta Esprito, Santo Association, the Holy Ghost Festival of 262 Lynnfield's Parkway, Saugus, Mass. 01906, on a two-day wine and malt liquor license, in common vigilance license, to be exercised at the annual celebration on June 6, 2024, from 3 p.m. to 12 a.m., and from July 7, 2024, from 11 a.m. to 9 p.m., with the following conditions. We actually have the conditions right in the announcement. Storage of malt and wine beverages for two days must comply with 204 CMA, special licenses CO4-7, provide state and local police details, and volumes to be turned down at 10 o'clock p.m. Further, temporary no parking signs to be posted on the odd sides of the following streets: Stoner Road, Laureen Road, Zito Drive, Milano Drive, McLean Road, and Gilway, and no parking on Randell Road. This public hearing will be held on Thursday, June 6, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. at the Saugus Town Hall Auditorium. Hello, how are you?
Hi, good evening. My name is--
Could we please have your name and address for the record?
I'm Izaria de Shulo, 5 Normandy Drive, SPBD, Mass. 01960. And I am here requesting the permit for us to have our annual feast. It is our 97th year. It's a tradition, and this is my first time here by myself.
Well, you're doing a great job.
So, and that's it.
Well, I attend the feast every year, and--
Yes, you do.
You all do a phenomenal job, and somebody sponsors it. All the food is for free. Everything is so well organized. You work very well with the police department.
Yes.
I'm going to open it up to board members.
And this year, I am the one that's hosting it. I am the one that's crowning.
Oh, you're going to be crowned.
So everybody, please, go there, free soup, sweet bread.
Sweet bread is unbelievable.
We'll be passing it out. They'll have malasadas, and hopefully have good weather.
Yeah.
Yes, last year it was rainy.
Yes.
But the food is -- the bread.
Yes.
Bread is awesome. Questions?
No questions, Madam Chairman. I haven't been there in a few years now, but when I come, I'll be looking for you.
He wants an extra helping of soup.
Absolutely. Come and see me. Just ask for the emprendedora.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Serena.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And that is seconded by the Chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serena's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Selectman Serena.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant a two-day wine and malt liquor license to, in common vigilance license, to be exercised at 262 Lynn Fels Parkway on July 6, 2024, from 3:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., and July 7, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., with the following conditions: storage of malt and wine beverages for two days must comply with the state's 204 CMA special license, and provide, you must provide police, uh, state police and local police details, the volume must be turned down at 10:00 p.m., and no further temporary no parking signs to be posted on the odd sides of, side of the streets of Donna Road, Lorraine Road, Zito Drive, Milano Drive, McLean Road, the Gilway, and no parking on Randall Road. Thank you.
And that's seconded by the Chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serena's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Good luck, I'm sure it'll be wonderful.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
If I could just get your name and address.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Good night.
Just want to make sure I have everybody's name right for the minutes. The next item on the agenda is a 7:40 hearing. It says, notice is hereby given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the town's traffic rules and regulations for the following request, and no U-turn sign at the entrance of Rivercrest Circle. Is there anybody here from Rivercrest Circle? The Board received correspondence from Town Council. It was actually Selectman Riley reached out, and I asked Town Council for his written opinion regarding this particular hearing, and I'd like to read it into the record. It says, under the provisions of Section 5.M of the Planning Board Rules and Regulations, the developer is responsible for the maintenance and repair of improvements and repair during the period of construction and continuing until such time as the subdivision is completed and he presents to the Planning Board evidence of recording of the conveyance of the utilities and the ways to the town Form K. Improvements include street sidewalks, no plumbing, lighting, water, sewer. The Board of Selectmen may table the request until such time as the subdivision has been approved or ask the petitioner to withdraw and reapply. The resident cannot put up their own sign, as signage must be approved by the Planning Board under Section 5.J.D. of the Rules and Regulations. And again, this is from our attorney, Town Council, John J. Vasapoli. So, I did call the applicant to let them know, I didn't get to speak to them, but I did leave a voicemail with my phone number, and I said if they had any questions, to call me back. With that said, what would the Board like to do?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
Because the applicant is not here, I wonder if we should just continue the hearing. And, in, in an effort to hear from the petitioner, if they come to our next meeting, they can request to withdraw without prejudice if they want. We don't have that application from them right now, so it's either we vote it down, which I don't want to necessarily vote it down, but we can't vote in the affirmative based on the fact that it's not an accepted development, so it's unfortunate that we didn't hear back from the applicant, but we do want to be able to explain it to them. So if they contact you, they could call you and even request via email, and we can just formally allow the withdrawal next meeting.
We could, so we could either continue it or table it, whatever you'd like to do.
Yeah, we can table it.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
And that's seconded by the Chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We have no old business. For new business, we have a discussion on outdoor seating regulations. As I think we've discussed as a Board, there have been some changes with the ABCC and what they're allowing for outdoor seating, and what they strongly recommend is that the policymakers in each community vote on a set of standard conditions for outdoor seating. We could add more if we want to, but there should be some standard conditions, and I'll read those quickly. These are the ones we've used in the past. That all locations requesting outdoor seating, the Fire Department requests emergency exits from the main building be kept clear, fire extinguishers be properly placed, adequate protection from vehicle traffic be provided, example jersey barriers, Fire Department walk-through every year, certificate of inspection for outdoor seating by Inspectional Services NDA D.C., not to exceed existing allowable seating. If there are changes to outside seating, the applicant needs to return to the Board of Selectmen to obtain an updated license. If tents are used, a flammability certificate must be obtained, and for all establishments requesting tents, no heaters of any type can be under the tent. So we would be voting this in as policy if the Board would like to do that.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
I'll move that forward in the form of a motion.
Thank you, and that is seconded by the Chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. I will let the ABCC know too. Next, Town Meeting voted on Article 24, which was an appointment to an apartment inspection committee, and Selectman Chicalini has volunteered to be on that apartment inspection committee. I have not heard from anybody else, I did mention it at the last meeting, so I am going to appoint him on that apartment inspection committee, and I thank you, Selectman Chicalini, for agreeing to be part of that committee, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Town Meeting also voted Article 25, that was an appointment to the Asheville Landfill Closure Committee. Again, I mentioned this at the last meeting, if people were interested, to let me know. Selectman Serena expressed interest in being on the Asheville Landfill Closure Committee. He was the only one that expressed interest. I would, considering that, I would like to appoint myself on this Ash Landfill Closure Committee as well, so those will be the two appointments to those committees. The Town Manager is not here, so we don't have a Town Manager's Report. The next item on the agenda is Selectment Appointments, and we only have for Saugus Cable TV, we have two slots, two positions for SCTV, and we have four people that have shown interest in being on the SCTV Board. I think some of them may be in the audience. If it pleases the Board, I would ask them to come up and speak before the Board, and, you know, at the end of all the discussion, if the Board feels comfortable tonight, if they would like to put the two people on, if they would like to do something different, we can do that as well. So with the people that were interested, so I do see, if, yeah, if you'd like to come up and just give your name and address, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Carla Michella, 14 Hillside Ave.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Could you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the SCTV Board?
Sure. So, now that I'm retired, I have a little bit more time, and I've been thinking about what I'd like to do in terms of the town. I'm a lifelong resident, except for time spent at school and training and that sort of thing. And I became involved with SCTV about maybe 18 months ago or so. I was working on a project for putting together a presentation for the Saugus Historical Society for a book about my father, who built a lot of these things in the town. This looks familiar, the desk looks familiar. And the Saugus Historical Society had invited me to give a presentation about that. It was a, basically a slide presentation, and in so doing, I was working with them and with the SCTV. I found them to be really professional, really efficient, and it, I've been, I don't know if you have my CV in front of you, but I've done a lot of teaching and presentations in, in my career, I've given seminars and done a lot of speaking and that sort of thing. And so I have an interest in putting together things like that, that's one thing that I like to do. I like to teach, and I think the SCTV is a fabulous resource for the town of Saugus, gives a huge variety of things, from history to science to televising all the public meetings and all that sort of thing. So I was very impressed with them, and I, I thought that would be a good fit for me. I think I could be an asset to the Board, and I would enjoy working with other members of the Board. As a, as a college professor, I had to sit on innumerable committees, it's, I think higher education is the king of committees, so I had a lot of experience working with groups and planning things and working as teams to do a lot of different kind of things, so that's what brings me here.
Well, thank you, you have a very impressive resume, nine pages long.
I know, that's the medical world for you.
Do board members have any questions?
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board of Selectmen, people in the audience and at home. I originally put in for this because I love to volunteer, I do a lot of volunteer work. I am a Town Meeting Precinct 10 member for over 10 years, so I kind of know how budgets work. I worked for the Housing Authority over 25 years, so we have maintenance budgets and all that. Again, I, I'd like to volunteer as much as I can, and I'm, I'm a constable for the town. I just, I'm hoping that maybe I can help make a difference. I love the TV and stuff, I'd love to learn a little bit more, but I guess mine's a little bit more on the finance part of it, but again, I'm, I'm open to anything, and I just would, hopefully that I could help out, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the Board. My name is Sandro Pansini, and I live at 57 Walden Ave, here in Saugus.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. I'm a businessman, I have a business here in Saugus. I've been living in Saugus for the past seven or eight years. I have two properties here in Saugus that I own, and a few other properties in Massachusetts and the state of Florida as well. My business, which is beyond financing, I'm a mortgage broker, in the process also to become a mortgage lender. I have it here in Saugus as well since 2018, and 2022, I opened my second business, which is a private lender for commercial lending here in Saugus as well. I've been in the financial business for quite a while, and my main purpose is seek financing for people that are looking for financing. I'm a member today of two churches, which one of them, I'm helping them grow, and also seek financing from Eastern Bank. I've been working with them for the past two years in order to get them eligible for financing as well. I also have another business that is a meat market. We have 17 stores, which 15 of them are here in Massachusetts, and two of them are, one in South Carolina and one in North Carolina. And I've been working with this organization for the past three years, also in order to help them grow and seek finance and organize the business itself. So I'm a person that I like to be involved in the community too, especially where I live, and when I saw the opportunity to help the TV station, I felt that I could come in and analyze what we have with the TV today, make it not only a sat asset to the town, but also see how we can generate revenue within the TV as well, here in town, seeking not only financing, but also making sure that we can make streams of income with the TV. So I would like to present myself as someone that is willing to come and assist with the Board members and with the town in any way that I can possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do board members have any questions from either Sandro, or Darren, or Carla?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Coviano.
I'd like to nominate Sandro Pansini.
One, one second. I, I do want to say that there was a fourth applicant. We did receive a letter of interest, and I just want to read that into the record, so we have all. So, Ms. Chair and Mr. Vice Chair of Saugus Board of Selectmen, I understand there may be an opportunity to join the Saugus Cable Board Commission. I have served in many capacities for over 20 years in town of Saugus, and I feel I could assist moving Saugus Cable forward, willing to join the Board until at least the next town elections to be held, since I do plan on regaining my seat in the Saugus School Committee. Attached is my community service resume, where you can see my involvement with state, town, town of Saugus, and many other public, private organizations. Again, if there's anything, if there is an opening, I'll be glad to help the team, to join the team. Dennis Gould with, with his phone number, so I just wanted to make sure we had that in the-
Yeah, I was, thank you, Selectman Chicalini, I was going to read that as well, and he has a long resume as well, so if you, if, if the Board feels comfortable making motions tonight, we can do that, if the Board would, if they feel, if you feel as though you have enough of information, if not, we could have interviews, it's whatever the Board feels comfortable doing.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Coviano.
I would like to make a motion to approve the application of Sandro Pansini, and the reason I make that motion, I'll speak on it, is because one of the people we lost on that cable board was in recent months, was Mike Pelletier, and Mike was the finance guy of the Board. I think we have great applicants, Darren's excellent, Carla fantastic, and Dennis Gould is a personal friend, I think he did a great job on the school committee. If there were four seats, I'd like to see them all there, unfortunately, we have two, and I'm just going by what I think is necessary there, because that Board has had some difficulties over the past years with money missing and, and stuff, and people have left the Board. I would like to see some stability there, and I think with your finance knowledge, I think you would help. So that's why I offer your name, and I'll leave it up to the Board.
Thank you. On terms of the finances, I'm highly regulated by the Division of Banks of six states where I am licensed today, so I understand the finances and the obligations with it as well.
Thank you.
That, that's seconded by the Chair, is there further discussion?
Madam Chairman, just my thoughts on this. I know the Board had a tough time the last six months trying to, we had two people on the Board resign, we had the Executive Director resign, myself and Selectman had had, went to several meetings to try to get things, help the Board exist, what was left of the Board, the three members to get this cable station back on track. There were a lot of personality conflicts going on over there, and my opinion is, I, I wouldn't support, I, I want to put someone on that I really know right now, that has worked, has a track record of working with people on other Boards, and that I know, in my opinion, it would be Carla Michella and Darren Ring. Nothing personally against you, but I, like I say, Selectman Panav, and I know firsthand what was going on down there, and I think right now, in fact, I didn't even want to add more people onto the Board right away, I, I wanted to wait, because the three that are on there now are working well together, but I'm going to support Carla Michella and Darren Ring for the appointments.
Are you making a substitute?
So, yeah, I'll do a substitute motion for Carla Michella at this point.
Okay, and that's seconded by the Chair, is there further discussion?
So, Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
I, I'm also touring, I've, I've known Darren probably close to 45 of my 52 years of existence. Hats off, always willing to throw his hat in the ring and help.
You could sit down if you'd like.
Sure, thank you. Also, Ms. Michella, I mean, obviously, your resume speaks for itself, it, truly amazing, and, but, and I, I'm excited. My, my opinion tonight, I wanted to get people that haven't really had much involvement- My opinion tonight, I wanted to get people that haven't really had much involvement in town, haven't had that ability. So Darren, you know, I appreciate what you're already doing in town meeting, and you work in the Housing Authority. I think you're a constable in town as well, too. Mr. Sousa, I know you had ran for selectmen in trying to get involved, so I was excited to see you kind of step up for something to get you involved. So me personally, I was, Mr. Gould, I wanted to support his application as well. The only thing that makes me a little scared is the fact that he's already made it clear that he wants to run for school committee, and we need stability on this board. We can't have planned turnover in another 14, 16 months, or whatever it is. We really need to, whoever gets appointed to this board, we need it to have significant tenure. So I, although the three applicants that are here, I would gladly support. If we had three positions, four positions, I would put all four, but I really thought Mr. Sousa and Ms. Michella would be two excellent candidates to come on, given the fact that they clearly have a passion to get more involved in the town, and they don't currently hold a specific seat within the town to occupy, so this would kind of get more new faces involved in the community. So that was just my feeling.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Riley.
To Selectman Ciccolini's comments, I totally agree. As far, Mr. Ring and I, we had a conversation, and I, we said it back in November, that whoever didn't win the election, at least come back in, get involved in the town. We want to keep seeing new people step up and be a part of our community and want to work for it. Again, nothing against Mr. Ring or Mr. Gould, but these are people that I feel will be well-accepted onto the board with the existing people that are on there now, and I would support Mr. Ciccolini's with Mr. Sousa and Ms. Michella, oh, Pansini. I know Sousa's in there somewhere, but Mr. Pansini and Mrs. Michella, and for those reasons, new names, new people that want to get involved, and we want to accept them. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor, and we have to take the motion of Selectman Serena with the substitute motion for Ms. Michella. So we have the substitute motion, the chair seconded it, we had discussion. All those in favor?
So just to be clear, we're only voting on?
We're only voting on Ms. Michella.
And this is a two or three?
This is a three-year.
Three-year term.
And it expires January 31st. So we could stagger them if you want. We don't have to go the whole three years, but it is a three-year term ending January 31st.
January 31st of 2020?
So we could, we could go?
25, 26, 27.
25, 26, 27, yeah. You could go to January 31st, 2027 if you want. Mm-hmm.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
All those in favor of Selectman Serena's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Carla.
Carla.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Ciccolini.
At this time, I'd like to reintroduce Selectman Cogliano's motion that we appoint Mr. Sousa for a three-year term expiring January 31st, 2027.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? I do.
Should we roll for a roll then?
You want a roll call, though?
That's what we usually do on appointments, all the appointments.
I, you know what? I don't remember ever doing a roll call vote unless we were confirming it from the town manager.
Right.
We confirmed, if it's a multi-level board, and if it's confirmed by the town manager...
With so many board members that have different candidates in mind.
Okay, do a roll call, that's fine. You want me to call a roll, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Selectman Riley?
Yes.
Selectman Serena?
No.
Selectman Cogliano?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
No.
And Selectman Ciccolini, yes. So congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
Darren, again, you know, you know, we can't say enough about just having somebody like you always willing to pick up the pieces and...
Much appreciated.
We all appreciate that, but like I said, it's nice to see new faces and some people with passion also that, maybe you're rubbing off on people, and people starting to want to do, get more involved, so it's great. And to Dennis Gould as well, I would have, like I said, if there was four seats, I would have supported all four of yous, so.
Well, there are other, Darren, I'm sorry you didn't get appointed. I am sure that Sandro and Carla will do a wonderful job, and I thank you both very much for stepping up. We truly appreciate it. You'll be working with the board as the Comcast, we need to renew, there's going to be a renewal with Comcast, there's an awful lot of work that's, I've been involved with Comcast, I used to be on the board many years ago, before I became a selectman, and I'm very much engaged with everything that goes on with the cable, so, but we don't get involved with programming or anything like that. That's all you. We have an arm's length. So if you need any information, please reach out to any of us, we're more than happy to help you out. And if there is something else that pops up, if somebody else does resign, Darren, I hope you step back up, and as Selectman Ciccolini said, Darren, I'm sorry, Dennis Gould has an amazing resume. I read it through, and I have to tell you, I had no idea that he was involved with as much as he is. I mean, it goes on and on, and I appreciate everything that Dennis does as well.
And he's still been to every single Super Bowl that the Patriots have been to. No, no, I'm serious. Him and his wife have been to every single Super Bowl that the Patriots have played in.
No, he has 33 things that he has done following organizations, and another six belonging to various other organizations. It's just, it's incredible how much he's dedicated to the town. So again, I wish, as Selectman Ciccolini said, I wish we had four positions. So thank you all for coming tonight, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the review of the summer meeting schedule. So our next meeting is going to be held on June 25th, which is a Tuesday, and then we have a July 16th meeting, which is a Tuesday, an August 20th meeting, which is a Tuesday, and then we start going into the fall, we have September 3rd, which is a Tuesday, September 24th, which is a Tuesday. I just wanted the public to know that we only have one meeting in the months of July and August.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Selectman Riley.
That we're speaking of the summer schedule, and now the town meeting is over. Would we be able to have a scheduled and update meeting by the, from the town manager, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, only because everyone, I'm sure, on the board and others have already planned their summers, and if we could get that done sooner than later, that'd be great.
Yeah, he, I did speak with him a couple of times. He wanted to wait for town meeting to be over. As you know, town meeting is over, so yes, it's now time for us to reconvene and talk about goals and where we are on different things, so absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. It's next, it's time for citizens' comments. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either to us? No, there's, we only have one reporter in the audience. We do have two sets of minutes to approve. We have February 27th, 2024.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Selectman Riley.
There's just one, and I meant, I caught it today, and I'm sorry, I would have put it ahead.
That's okay.
We were in the conference room that day, not the auditorium.
Oh, thank you, thank you for that change. I'll make that change.
I just saw that, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Nope. So Madam Chairman.
Yes, Selectman Riley.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the February 27 minutes, 2024, with the correction of the conference room and not auditorium.
And that is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero. The next set of minutes are May 28th, 2024. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano, and that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye abstain.
Of course. Opposed, we foreapprove, one abstention. Next, we have members' comments. Selectman Riley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, again, want to thank all the four applicants that came before us for SCTV. I would have been comfortable with any of them on there, and again, we were trying to beg people to come on, and now we have too many. So those two that did not get on this time, just keep everything in mind of other boards and committees, because we'd love to have more people get involved in the town. I just want to congratulate the graduates again of 2024, and that's it for tonight for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. Selectman Cogliano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, Benny Cogliello is a Saugus resident, and he worked at Stop &amp; Shop forever, and he retired recently, and it came to my understanding that they didn't have any event in Benny's honor, and Benny's like a Bristol Street legend. Michael can share stories as well. I'd like to bring Benny in and give him a citation from the board for his years of service to the citizens of Saugus.
Yeah, we'll see if we can, we'll see if we can get him in for our next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Selectman Ciccolini? Oh, I'm sorry, Selectman Serena.
I have nothing tonight, Madam Chair.
Selectman Vice Chair Ciccolini.
I have nothing tonight, Madam Chair. Mr. Selectman Cogliano and I were in agreement on Benny. I think it's going to go a long way for him to get recognized. He's a special guy and a very special family. His sister, Toni, was literally like a sister to my mom, so I love the idea that we're able to recognize Benny for his over 30 years of commitment to his job.
Thank you, Selectman Ciccolini. I just want to mention that the Strawberry Festival is going to be a week from Saturday. Just make sure I get the right date. It's 9:00, the vendors will be out, and it's right at the American Legion Hall, the Procopio Hall, and in front of the Roby School, the Garden Club will be out. So that is, make sure I get the right date.
I think it's June 15th.
June 15th?
Yeah, 15th. 10 to 2.
Thank you, yeah.
I would be bought five tickets.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be serving strawberry cheesecake from 10 to 2, but the vendors will be out at 9:00, and that is on the 15th of June. With that said, would somebody please make a motion to adjourn? Thank you, and that's seconded by the chair. All those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Have a wonderful night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Night, everybody.
Thank you.